Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the March 8th, 2023 regular meeting of the Bronxville Planning Board. Welcome to everyone. We haven't met since January. Which brings us to the site plan application for 65 Pondfield Road, Scalini's Canopy. And there are actually two applications for Scalini's tonight, so let's take them in turn. Let's do the canopy first.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm James De Beany. I'm an attorney representing Scalini's Restaurant with respect to both applications, the first one being the canopy we'll discuss. The application has already gone through the Design Review Committee, I believe the board's aware of that, and it was a favorable file from last Wednesday. Let me just check to that here. This application is exclusive to permit retractable canopy above the existing courtyard, on the ground floor of the existing restaurant. The courtyard currently holds 22 guests, seated guests, and the entire space occupies 550 square feet. For those who have not been to Scalini's Restaurant, I have pictures of the courtyard area. It's a wall of light being handled. Oh, there we are. So we've got some of the things sent in now. So that's the courtyard area right now. You can see there's no, there is no canopy up there now. What the owner now, Angelo De Rosa, does, speaking into the mic. Yes, you're welcome. What the owner does now is use these small umbrellas there now, but that really doesn't do the trick when the weather's a little bit more inclement. So what the owner's seeking to do now, Angelo's seeking to have a mechanized louver canopy system similar to what you see there in the proposed pergola. The system is motorized, it'll be able to retract when he wants the sun to come in, and if there's rain expected, then he could push it button, and it would then be fully extended. This canopy, which I also have a small version of it that may look a little bit more appropriate.
Yes, please, thank you. That's great. Thank you.
But those are the colors that you see there. The company that they're using has done numerous installations, rare retractables, New York. This company has indicated, it's been tested for wind and accumulation that far exceeds whatever would occur, and that enclosed area, as most of you know, if you've been to the restaurant, there's, it's sort of enclosed on three sides almost, so there's limited wind, and Angelo also indicated that in the wintertime, there's significantly less snow that would accumulate in that courtyard area versus what you would get on the parking lot side. So, but notwithstanding that, it has been tested to handle any significant snowfall that would occur there. The size of the canopy would be approximately 13 feet by 40 feet. It's 13 feet by 40 feet. And again, it would be secured with a foundation into the courtyard ground with 16-inch by 42-inch concrete posts that would secure the canopy down, so it would clearly go nowhere. And it would be bolted down to that foundation. So we're seeking to have this approved, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have with respect to the canopy. Yeah, that's right. I just want to add one thing. The canopy is not affixed to the building in any way, shape, or form. It's totally secured by the foundation and the posts that go into the ground. Yeah, and the vegetation will continue to remain there. If you recall, if anyone's been there, there's maybe two feet, a foot and a half border that goes around that has gardens and grass and some flowers and stuff. That will continue to be in place and maintain that nice aesthetic look to it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taft, did you have any additional comments on this application?
It's come to my attention, and I guess this would be in regards to both applications for Scalini's, that there's been some washing, maybe of the surface or something where it was washing off into the parking lot. I've just today informed the applicant that, you know, that's not allowed, so they've agreed to, you know, refrain from doing that, and have agreed to put in some sort of drainage that would help to avoid that. So that's, I suppose, more just for you to be aware of. If you wanted to make a condition, that would certainly be up to you. You know, my office will be taking care of it regardless, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. Other than that, it's, you know, it's a good addition to it. I'd much rather have a structure like this versus the umbrellas. I think it's much safer and more permanent, so I would support it in that manner.
So, sorry, the washing, where is that currently taking place? In the courtyard itself or in the parking lot?
I think in the courtyard, and then it just so happens to go right down to the parking lot, and then there's a little swale there, so it kind of makes its way off pretty quickly. So, you know, it's not a great amount, but it's enough where it would be considered a nuisance and needs to be rectified.
And how would that potentially be rectified?
With a drain which would have a, it would have sort of a filter, so it would trap any of the debris or grease and that kind of thing, so it would be designed specifically for that.
So only water would go down?
So clean, yeah, so clean water would be discharged, you know, in the proper manner.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
As was indicated, we were just today, I spoke with the owner. He has to come with making sure he complies with any local codes or state codes that require him not to hose down or to have any water runoff inappropriately onto other properties.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I mean particularly if we're not onto the next application yet, but if you're increasing the number of tables potentially, whatever issue exists today could be exacerbated by the additional tables, so, and additional food service. So we'll, as a board, discuss whether any additional conditions are appropriate when we get to that point. Members of the board, any questions, comments? Albert, did you have some?
I had a couple of questions, if that is okay. There was a slide, I don't remember which one it was, that showed there's a building, there's the restaurant, then there's the courtyard. Yeah, you can go back one.
Yeah.
And then if you go to the back there, see, no, stay there, please. If you go to the back, so here's the restaurant on the right, and then the courtyard is right behind you. You can see one of the umbrellas, the orange, and then the building behind. Who owns the building behind? Is that where Scalini has its storage area?
It's the same owner in which Scalini's is operating out of.
Okay, because my question, my concern was that if you have this very high canopy, then it's going to shut off all views for those windows that are on that ground floor.
So my client is working with the landlord, who is his landlord, who owns both properties, both the building he's in, and also, the second application, we'll go into further detail, will show that empty office space, which has been empty for many years, our client is seeking to take on some of that space and expand a little bit. So that's been contemplated by the landlord and the restaurateur?
Okay, thank you. The, my other question was, I know there was a brief note in there about Raidwater, and I went to the website where this is built, and it looks like the structure has it such that these posts are built, and inside the post is the drain, which then goes, I guess, just onto the ground and goes out.
Right.
My question was, it looks like with something that large, if you sort of look at maybe this drawing, you're going to have these middle posts, which then, are they going to have drains that are going to go right in the middle of your covered outdoor area? So would the water be coming out of every one of the posts?
Yes, I believe so.
Each one?
Each one? So you're okay, though, with the ones, because it's outdoor anyways, right? Okay. Because you'll have, the water now just sort of hits the umbrellas and goes and comes now, but now you're going to have water collecting and then going down in somewhat of a greater force in six or eight, or I don't know, how many posts are you proposing? There's six posts, and from what I understand, architect is here, Richard Hein, he indicated that some of them will drain into the planter itself, so it'll water the plants at the same time.
Okay. Thanks, I just did a question. It was interesting how that works, actually.
So if it's pouring rain, if I'm eating out there and it's pouring rain, is the water going to hit the ground, like where you're sitting, or where will it? I understand it's going to go down through the post, but then where will it disperse?
So three, there's, three of them would go into the garden, so they won't disperse into the ground, and the other three would go into the ground.
But it's not going to go where you're eating? It's not going to go in the ground where you're eating?
The three that go into the planters are those ones there, in front of the outside of the?
Yes.
On the other side, you don't have planters to put them in?
Correct.
With rented office space on. So in that sense, the middle one will drain on to the existing, whatever, what is it called?
There's not a table right, directly there. If you notice, there's a table to the right of it, a number of feet, and then the next one is significantly over to the left, so.
Your question was just that it will come onto that area if you're sitting out there and it's pouring raining? It will come.
Yeah, it's not intended to be a waterproof environment, and I'm not sure if the, sorry. Thank you. Again, it's not a waterproof environment. If it's pouring out there, I'm not sure that they're going to be eating dinner or lunch.
Nice to have the option. Thank you.
How is it pitched in terms of the runoff? Just, not that it's?
Right now, it's pitched towards the parking lot.
Toward the parking lot? Okay, so it would come out the back there toward the, okay.
So the pitch goes from the right side of this drawing all the way back to the parking lot, to A?
So the pitch right now goes from here, and then?
Then goes down that way. So most of the water will go towards that parking lot anyways?
Right, it's not going to change what's going on with the water flow now.
Okay. Although it might concentrate more in the garden and have less actually flowing out to the parking lot.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, great.
And it's orange?
Yes.
Like the existing umbrellas?
Yes, exactly. That's his theme. That's his, yeah, exactly.
Eileen noticed that, I was just picking up on it.
And presumably the space heaters would remain for, or no? No space heaters? So it'll just be, it'll be very clean look with no umbrellas on individual tables, just the new?
Yeah, I'm, I wrote, you know, for some heating hours.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Heating and air conditioning.
Yes.
So you would have a heating and air conditioning instead of what you have here? What you were saying? So what would you do like in a day like today, where people want to sit outside and it's a little cold? You would have some kind of heat coming on to the?
I don't think, you're not going to have these gas-operated ones, especially with a roof that you're going to have.
Yeah, I would say that's probably an issue.
Yeah, so there may be something like you see at Underhills. He's got small things around the floor that, yeah, or blowout heat across the floor area, or maybe some radiant electric heat, something obviously that would be conducive to a semi-enclosed area. But putting the gas heats is not something that he'd be keeping there.
But those would not be fixtures to the ground?
No.
In the same way that the posts would be fixtures?
Right.
They'd be removable?
Exactly.
Yep.
Seasonal.
Mr. Hayden or Ms. Marshall? Questions or comments?
I think it's a lot better than if you put something in the parking lot, like all the restaurants in town did to the sidewalks, so I think it's a plus.
Sorry, Mr. De Beany. I, sorry, I think you mentioned in your initial presentation, but the materials of the enclosure?
Yeah. So. This is the posts and the framing material? And then the louvers?
This is the louver material?
No, that's the posts.
Post, the steel post?
Yeah.
So if, board, if there are no more comments, I guess we should open up the public hearing. And do we have any members of the public here who would like to comment on this application? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and have a discussion. What are everyone's thoughts?
I like it. I have no problems.
I'm happy now that I've heard the answer with the water, though. I looked at it, it's interesting, it's very innovative, it's new, it's a big improvement, and you're going to have, like you said, it's going to be a lot safer. So I'm in favor.
Yeah, I think the aesthetics are nice, and I think it's an improvement over the existing space, so it makes sense to me.
I think the town would like having the option to be able to eat outside with covering, and it's a very enjoyable place, and it's a nice atmosphere, so I think the renovations would look good.
I suspect most of us have been to Scalini's at some point or another, so I'll speak for myself at least. And likewise, I think based on what's been presented, I think it would be an improvement. Look, it's a nice, clean look, and it looks like you'll get good, better use out of the space, so, and I don't see any health or safety issues associated with it, or any construction issues, but we'll, you know, we'll come on to the next application, to the extent that that might raise some additional issues. So having said that, do I have a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
Motion made? A second?
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approved. One down. Okay, so why don't we roll right into the café and wine tasting room?
Very good. Just for the record, my name is James De Beany. I'm the attorney on behalf of Scalini Restaurant and Angelo De Rosa. Our application today is to propose annexed wine tasting room and café to the existing Whereas this, we're seeking to get permission from the planning board to add an additional 1,025 square feet of space to the existing restaurant. Currently, this space is vacant, and it's been vacant for some time now. It's office space on the ground floor. So it's this office space here that's being converted, and then be able to have it work with the existing courtyard and the existing restaurant here. There, this will be additional 480 square feet for the wine tasting room that will hold 16 guests. That's the wine tasting room there. Now, this room is not going to be available to regular dining, but this is more for wine tasting events that Angelo would like to have there, and he estimates that'll occur approximately once a month. And that will hold 16 guests, as I indicated. This wine tasting room would be in addition to the café. The café would be 545 square feet, and the café is this area here, which is 545 square feet of area to be additional, part of the additional dining, the regular dining space. So this would be the additional dining space that would accommodate, that would also be part of the courtyard and the main restaurant. And as most of you know, who have eaten in the courtyard, the courtyard's really, for the most part, seasonal, so you're not going to be likely eating there in January and February or in the colder months, so that's not a permanent number that would be available to the restaurant all year round. So JMC Planning Engineers' Report dated January 25th, 2023, was conducted and produced and provided to the village, which showed that that was very favorable, there was sufficient parking, and this is the report here. So the report goes into the methodology and the conclusion, and I believe JMC has produced reports in the past with the village and the counties throughout Westchester County, their respected organization. And so the report takes into consideration the parking within, I think, a 300-foot radius, and they've come to the conclusion that there's sufficient parking there. It should be noted that the report does not take into consideration the already eight spots that are on the parking lot premises right there. Angelo currently has three spots which he has access to at all times, and then after 5 o'clock, there's an additional five spots on that parking lot area, which does not meet at parking, but belongs to that building, which Angelo, the restaurant, has access to after 5 o'clock. So none of those spots, those eight parking spaces, was taken into consideration when doing this analysis. And also, I want to point out that the report was done in December, which I think we could all surmise is one of the busiest times to be looking at parking space in the Village of Bronxville. And even with that in mind, and this is going to be done on Friday and Saturday, which Angelo acknowledged was the busiest times for the restaurant to have guests, it was clear that the, with all that taken into consideration, sort of like the worst case, the worst storm scenario, there was still ample parking. And in fact, JMC's methodology and conclusions were approved by Sarah Brown, who was hired by the village, and Sarah Brown's with H&amp;H, and I presume you folks know who Sarah Brown is. And so she reviewed the report and came to the same conclusion that the methodology and conclusions by JMC Planning Engineers was sound, and that there was sufficient parking as well. So that would resolve that issue. It also should be noted that the office space, the code, would require the same amount of parking as the restaurant. So it's not like we're going into a higher demand for parking. It would only match that of what was previously used by the office when it was occupied some years ago. So we're seeking to have our permission from the planning board to allow Angelo to proceed with this approval and allow him to expand the restaurant and better serve, you know, his community and his neighbors. Be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have at this time.
Thank you. Board? Questions? Comments?
So when somebody comes to the new dining area, the café and the wine tasting area, they're generally going to have access through that side parking lot, right? Is that intended?
Can you picture, please, with the parking lot, please?
Yeah, that one.
The colored picture in the beginning? Thank you.
Are you referring to this here?
Yes.
Yeah, he doesn't receive, or he doesn't receive customers through that area. All the customers come in through the main entrance, and then they're directed to go to the appropriate seating. But no, they would not be coming in through the parking lot.
Well, it's just that the passive egress diagram doesn't have any of the egress lines coming from the front door. They all seem to go?
I believe it does show emergence, that's emergency exit, the emergency?
Oh, is that what it is? That's the emergency egress?
Yeah, yeah. That's emergency egress. The dotted line that you see is required because you have to have a certain number of feet in order to be able to?
Gotcha.
Escape from an enclosed area.
Okay, so they'd come down the stairs and then?
Yeah.
So they go through the restaurant?
Through the restaurant, through the?
Through the patio?
They go through the restaurant, you'd meet the hostess over here, and you'd be seated here, here, or over here. There was an additional door that was installed here as well, which doesn't exist there right now. That's providing additional means of egress for that space.
And there's, so if I were to come and go to a wine tasting, I'd come in the front door, and how would I get there?
Yeah, you'd come in through the front door, and then the hostess would direct you to the wine tasting area, right here.
Okay.
So if you go back to the diagram, the picture of the yard?
Yeah.
So where the van, like, over that, that's not where the new door is going to be? The new door is going to be?
New door is actually on the building.
Is on that building, so that's the building to the, the second building over has nothing to do with the?
Correct.
Gotcha. So those two gabled windows mark?
This is part of this building here.
Gotcha.
This is part of the same landlord, same property. This, I believe, is a separate property that belongs to those folks there.
Okay.
So it ends there.
Are there any windows in the new spaces?
If you want, I can, our architect, Richard Hein, but yeah, there are windows in the lower level in the new space here. I believe they're on the side here, right? Correct?
The ones we saw on the picture, the colored?
Those are those windows.
They're going to be spiffed up, though, I think.
Yeah, there's a double door and?
Yeah.
Right there are doors, aren't they?
Yeah.
They look like they're all doors.
There's existing space.
Into the terrace, so those are doors.
So they're all doors.
But there's nothing in the, in the wine room, there's no windows, Angelo?
Sorry, but in the wine room, aren't there windows on Pondfield Road?
No.
There's a basement on Pondfield, because you're on the back end.
Oh, so the trading card shop is above the wine? Okay, got it, got it.
Exactly.
Okay.
So the escape plan for the wine room, where was that egress line you just had?
Yeah, sure, you can show them. That's, those are the dotted lines there. This is the dotted line here, and goes to things here.
So you're only, you only, you only need to have one? Okay.
Yeah, it's a matter of travel distance, and it satisfies that travel distance. That's why I wrote this whole.
Oh, wow. So wait, oh, this was?
This looks out into the courtyard.
Yeah, so there's another bathroom here.
This one here?
Yeah. I have another question, that's okay.
Yes, yes, please. Yeah, please.
So the, we can stay with this one, I guess. The kitchen is right past the hostess?
The kitchen is?
Is on?
Just past the?
Over left.
Yeah, right there. So this is going to be big enough for almost double the number of people?
Yeah, Angelo's comfortable with that.
Okay. Just a question, because it's a lot, it's a big, then if you have people in the wine room, that's a big increase. Okay. And you are going to have, you're obviously going to have more people?
Please approach the podium. Yes, thank you.
So the question was, is the kitchen able to handle?
Yeah.
When the wine rooms are used, probably double the number of tables?
So my plan was actually to take some tables away from the dining room now, to alleviate a little bit that issue, and also make it more comfortable for the customers, because now we have the tables? because now we have, uh, the tables are like 18 inches apart, but I like people to have a little more space so, you know, everybody feels a little more privacy or, you know, some space. And, um, in the kitchen, uh, right now, we do have some refrigerators that we use for desserts purposes and ice cream, which will be relocated in the back, um, the cafe bar. So that would, uh, give us more space in the kitchen and more, um, I guess, more productivity.
So, so that empty, those empty offices to the right, those are not, you're not taking those on?
No, that's the existing space that we have.
Oh, you have that space?
That's storage that we have, yes. My office there to the right.
Okay, because it just says empty, okay.
Yeah.
Right, because I guess, um, one of the comments before is if I walk through the front door, talk to the hostess and, and we're all, say we're all going to the wine bar, when you make that, just when you go past the bar, it, the, the tables are a little tight there to get through to the...
Yeah.
You could have a lot of traffic, I hope. I hope you have a lot of traffic.
That's why, that's why I want to take tables away.
Yeah, you want to sort of clear...
Absolutely.
And then if you're, my dining there, I don't want to be watching people go by me the whole time.
Exactly, right. That's exactly the point.
And, and you, you're obviously going to have a lot more, or more people working
Oh, yeah.
For you. So where are they going to park?
Yes.
They're going to park in, you had, did you have to buy more merchant parking or?
My staff usually, um, I only have a few people that have cars, but they do come to work by Uber.
Okay.
Yeah, only, uh, I think just the chef has a car. Uh, everybody else either gets Uber, uh, going and, and going back, you know, coming to, and going back home. So, yeah, that's, that's not an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
That's all the questions I had.
Okay, thank you, Albert. So if someone is in, just, if someone's in the wine room and there's like, let's say that there was a fire in that area near, you know, near the cafe, near the entrance to the wine room, how would you get out? If, if it's in the, if it's downstairs in the lower level?
The, this path here is, is what complies with code in terms of egress. So I would see...
So it's not downstairs?
You're not going downstairs.
It's all on one level.
No, Larry's question is if there's a fire in the front of the cafe where the double doors are, you're, you're, you have to go through the fire to get out?
I mean, it's, there's no window wells or anything, right? There's... But that complies with code? Is that... I, I, we should actually, why don't we, like, Mr. Taft, would you like to speak to this generally, but, you know, specifically to that issue as well?
Yes, obviously, once, once it's approved, a full, uh, plan along with these... But actually, there are, in that area, there are two, uh, required means of egress. There's the other door on the right.
Where?
Right in here as well. So right where these lines are depict required means of egress, I believe, right? So, so actually, that room has two means of egress, which is, is more reassuring. I, I agree. Um, code-wise, it would be just that one means of egress is required. Uh, so they've got two, that's all good. Um, and like I say, you know, we would do a full plan review and fire code review, uh, to assure compliance. I, I don't see any, uh, red flag.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
So that second, that second line of egress, not where the ni- nice new double doors are, that, that's going to be a door there, Paul?
The door, right? Yes.
Okay. So you're going to have two ways to get out?
Yeah, so, so those are the required means of egress. We always struggle when we have doors that are, um... Have tables in front of them, um, and, you know, afflicted with, uh, when I go to the restaurant with my wife, I look at these things and she looks... Uh, but those are required, so that's acceptable in this case. Um, you know, it's when, usually if you look for an exit sign or a door, those are the required means of egress. That's what I look at in a restaurant, you know, as far as going down the road and, and, you know, things change on their layouts a little bit. Um, but, you know, when we do our interval inspections, that's something we look at, you know, hey, this has got to be moved. Um, but other than that, uh, you know, it looks to comply. And I, I don't see any other. The other thing I would, uh, point out, I'll, I'll expand it, is, you know, the increase in seating as a total. He's got a chart for which, you know, it, I guess really the application, if I'm not mistaken, is, is for a change of use of that area and it's sort of a, a site plan, uh, amended site plan for what they have there already. So you would look at, you know, what increase in seating there is as well as that area that's changed in use.
So when, when we were, when we're considering the increase in seating, and this applies to the parking as well, and I, I couldn't find my parking, uh, study, are we looking at it on the basis of 20 new seats or 36 new seats?
I believe the most recent, um, plan, I can see any documentation, it showed total of 40 seats. So, um, that was...
Forty additional?
No, it, it was 40 total and this was a, a, an older, uh, approval. You know, our records really are not, uh, I don't think, full, so...
Okay, but, um, but in terms of the ca- so you got 20 in the cafe, you have, I think, five tables of four that are in the diagram. I think the part, the parking study was done on the basis of 20 additional patrons?
Plus the 16.
Plus the 16? Okay, so it is on the base, so the parking is on the basis of 36. And it looked like you had some headroom on the parking anyway for various reasons, including the ones you mentioned. So in term, which kind of leads to my next question. The wine tasting, you had represented in the application that it was only going to be used for wine tasting about once a month. And my question is, uh, once you've got this room set up, would it, would it not also occasionally be used or available for private dinners?
I think that's probably, um, part of the wine tasting. I mean, it would be a private party to go in for that wine tasting.
Okay, so it's not really a wine tasting event where you go for two hours and there's a, a sommelier there with, you know, comes from wherever and you do your wine tasting and then you retire back to the, uh, main dining room after the wine tasting? It would be for a sit-down dinner, basically, a sit-down private dinner?
Yeah, wine dinner?
Yeah. So it's, so it's really a private room? I mean, is, right, it's not limited to wine tasting, is my point?
The idea by itself.
Right, okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, as Architect said, it'd be ancillary food service with the wine, so it would be just wine by itself. There'd be some ancillary food services.
Right, okay. All right. Mr. Hayden, Ms. Marshall, any?
No, you said the parking was covered from the standpoint of the amount that's available at that time of day. Oh, um, we could ask about the awning. The only reason I bring up the awning, um...
Yeah, please, yeah.
That's in the picture is because we're having to approve awnings on this agenda tonight for other companies, other businesses, like... So they have an awning on the, um, the outside that wasn't included, so it will, you have to come forward again to get that approved?
If there's a sign on it, right? Which, which, the new door?
Over the new door on the outside, on the left-hand side?
Yeah, the dimension was, you're going to put an awning on that?
Yeah, if you go, yeah, the awning, it shows it on the, the plan.
It could have a sign there or is this going to be an awning?
No, just frame protection, no sign.
Yeah, so if there's no signage, then you don't have to get it approved?
That's a handicap entrance over there, so that's all it's...
That's a que- Mr. Taft, do they, will they need to come back for the, just for the awning?
Which awning are you referring?
So on the, over the outside door and past, on the left-hand side?
The double, the double doors are for the new, uh, new cafe? They say they're going to put a, uh, small awning canopy over the double doors?
Yes.
Which makes sense because you don't want to get wet getting in.
Yeah, the funny thing is you don't see it in this set of proposals. You see it in the old set. I think that's why we're not finding it.
Yeah.
It's in the one where it's, uh, the drawing.
Right, but I mean, is the drawing for the...
Right. And, right, there go back one?
Is it there?
Uh, yeah, you see on the bottom left?
Yeah, bottom, yep.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Bottom left is an awning or canopy, I think they call it. What size? I can't read that far.
Do you want a closer frame? I'm trying to, I'm just...
Here.
I should, I should...
Yeah, I'd be happy to eliminate people with...
No, no, wasn't, I was just asking because did, is that something that you'd have to... It wasn't talked about, so I was just curious, is it something that needs to be?
I, I mean, the question, I get, the question is, do they, can the, is the awning included in the plans, is that part of the site plan application that we can approve without a separate awning application? Or does it need its own separate application? I think it's more procedural.
No, I mean, it is shown on the plans for this application, uh, you know, and my curiosity would be what color is it?
So this is what you're referring to, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, if you, if you...
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's, that's where the spot is, yeah.
So that's a handicap entrance there. My clients have to put the color black or gray or something that's not, you know, that doesn't stick out too much there in terms of the color, if, if the board has the purpose.
Or, or the same color as the awning in the front.
Yeah, that was, the color in the front is, that would make sense to put the color.
Well, the existing ones are on garden where I guess are black, right?
No, they're maroon.
Maroon, yeah.
Burgundy?
Burgundy, maroon.
And so are the umbrellas near the parking lot, so...
Yeah, so there's two...
There's sort of two color schemes going on.
Two color schemes going on.
So just, I mean, I, not meaning to complicate your life further, is there any, thematically, is there any, you know, objective in the short or long term to be consistent with the color scheme? You know, because you're going to do the orange, you know, uh, cover in the courtyard, um, then there aren't, there were existing orange, uh, you know, umbrella tables. Is, is there any plan currently or possibly in the future to harmonize the color scheme?
Yeah, it should disappear, so he's not looking for it to stick out and be orange to match the canopy. He's not looking for that.
Okay, so just keeping the existing on the exterior and the...
Exactly, and just utilitarian.
Yes, okay, all right. Okay, does that, I think that answers the question.
Yeah, we just, I didn't want them to have to come back for a canopy.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's a good point, yeah, that's, that's, thank you, Mr. Taft. Anyone else? Ms. Myers? Uh, let's see, um... I didn't have anything else on my list, so, uh, unless there are any other questions from the board, I guess I would like to open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, what are your thoughts?
I, I like what the plan is. I just, we'll be happy if Paul goes through it and just make sure, you know, when you do your, your, your stress test, that, you know, just, I think, one of our concerns is the safety of the people in the wine room. It might be us at some point. So, you know, just, I would be, if, if that's, I think that was our biggest complaint. Otherwise, I'm, I'm in favor of the, uh, the application.
Also in favor, I think it looks good and I, I think if it allows Angelo to open up that front room, because there's going to be a lot more traffic, your servers are going to be going and cutting through that courtyard, right? So when I'm sitting there, I wanted to feel, still feel calm and nice. But no, it looks good. I think it looks good.
Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, I, I like it. I think they've addressed every question I had, so I'm, I'm in favor as well.
Ms. Marshall?
Um, no, they've addressed everything and the driveway will not be used as an entrance for people to get in.
Other than handicap, I guess, yeah.
Other than the handicap, I guess, so...
Oh, right, handicap have to, would have to go through the driveway, right?
That's what's done now, right? The handicap?
Well, you don't, you don't have that open yet, so...
Yeah, right now. We have a ramp.
So that, that back entrance then wouldn't be accessible to the...
Office comes down to it.
Coming up the driveway.
The, the new, I'm not sure, so I guess if we're talking, if we're going to that, um, area, for people who are handicapped to get into the wine room, they would have to go through the driveway in the back to get in and I'm assuming there's, it's accessible for them to get in, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's correct. And also the wine room is at great, so a wheelchair would be able to go into the cafe or the wine, the wine tasting area as well.
So I don't know if any, if this is our consideration, but maybe if that's the case, I don't know what they do with handicap parking, but is there space for someone to be able to pull up, to be able to get in there? Do you know what I'm saying? Like you have those seven spots in the back to keep it...
Is there, can you go to that picture with the, uh, the, is, is, sorry, is there a handicap spot in the one through seven right there?
Or, or can...
Or could you, would you think about making one? I think maybe you could make that where that van is, I don't know, I don't know, it's up to you guys, but you said you have three right now.
Well, the, um, it's, Angelo has these two.
Just the three alongside of the wall.
Oh, these three along the wall?
Yeah, the ones, from the van now.
Okay.
Well, that'd be the perfect place to put it.
I'm not sure...
There's handicap spots in the lot there.
Is that it?
Yeah, they're, they're...
Right in front, yeah, right in front. Six and seven, there's a handicap.
Because that's a medical building there, so there are, yeah. So as, I mean, I think as a practical matter, I suppose what would happen is when the party checks in, uh, you know, there would be, um, you would be alerted to the fact that one or more of the members are handicapped and in need of assistance and then they would be escorted to the alternate, uh, entrance effectively.
Exactly. They, they could pull the car up to, to this point here and unload or load and then be escorted to, through there with the handicap, uh, access and then if they're going into the wine room or to the, uh, to the, uh, the cafe, they'd have no problem doing that. Um, I, I believe there's, there's handicap parking in the street.
Right in the parking lot, right?
Yes.
To Angelo's, sorry about that. Right in front of Angelo's, uh, you know, restaurant, so, um, I, I think that should be sufficient.
Yes. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay, um, and likewise, I'm, I, I think it's, um, a good plan. Uh, it, it seems to be, you seem to have considered a lot of the issues, uh, the potential issues. You know, one of the issues we talked about earlier relating to this, uh, this runoff of the, some of the wastewater, which might have, uh, you know, food waste associated with it. I'm, I'm a bit, um, torn, I don't know whether, uh, and, you know, I appreciate your views on this, Mr. Taft, whether it would be appropriate to attach a condition, you know, to the extent you're, for example, going to look at health and safety issues on ingress and egress and, and other code issues when they do the work, I just wonder whether that couldn't be handled in the context of, of that work as opposed to attaching it as a formal, uh, condition to the approval? Um, and I just wonder what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, I can, I can, you can rest assured that manage that part, you know, life safety and whatnot.
Okay, so, you know, so I would be inclined not to, you know, with the.
Condition.
Condition any approval that we, we decide to give on, on, with respect to that particular issue, but having discussed it tonight, you know, in a fair amount of detail, of course we would, you know, the village would expect that it would be addressed and, and dealt with to the satisfaction of all of the, you know, particularly the neighbors.
Yeah, Angelo wants to continue to be a good neighbor, and he will make sure that he complies with all local codes and any recommendations from, from the billing department.
Yes, thank you, thanks. So, with all that said, do I have a motion to approve this application?
So move.
Motion made. Any second?
Second.
Ms. Marshall has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you very much.
Motion approved. Good luck, thank you very much, thank you. Okay. Got so many papers filed, I know. Okay, next application we have is 50 Prescott.
Yeah, yeah, just a little further, that's great.
Can you all see that okay?
Much better.
Yes.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Chairman, board, thank you. Um, my name is Anderson Kenny, I'm the architect for the owners at 50 Prescott. Um, the clients actually purchased a house about two years ago, um, they engaged us to do a renovation. Um, they essentially taxed, tasked us with, you know, with three things. One was to, you know, create a renovation that works for their lifestyle and, you know, their family. Uh, the other is to address the curb appeal of the existing house, and then the third was to really work with the aesthetic of the hilltop, so that's what we endeavored to do. Uh, we went through the full review process with, you know, Paul's office and his team, and were approved, and actually started removals, and in the process of going through the removal process, we uncovered some, sorry.
You have, you have a point.
Yeah, I have my own, yeah.
Okay, I hope that other group didn't take the pointer, because I don't see it.
I think he, he might have.
You have a pointer, you guys need to get him back, then.
We know, we know where Schalini's is.
Um, the, the long and the short of it is that during the removal process, we uncovered some unsafe construction from previous renovations. So, just a little bit of history on this house, um, it was built in the 50s, 1953. Originally, it was modeled after a salt box structure with a detached carport, um, and over, you know, the last 70 years, it's had nine different renovations, the most recent being in 2014. Um, the renovations, from what we can tell, consisted of converting, you know, a carport or a porch or some other structures attached to the original building into conditioned space, um, and then there were just some other practices that were done that, that would not hold up to any sort of standard building code. So, when we uncovered these things, and they were throughout the house, with the exception of the original 1953 structure, which I find kind of interesting, um, we set, we, we, still building to and removing to the approved plans, um, we, you know, established that we have to address these issues and make them structurally sound. We engaged an engineer, structural engineer, um, you know, I've been practicing for 25 years, so, you know, that also, you know, that expertise added to what we needed to do to address this. Um, some of the problems that we encountered included.
Can you guys see? Larry, can you see? Or should we move that thing all the way?
Yeah, I can move that. I'm fine, thank you.
I can't see it.
Oh, you can't see it.
Oh, this is in the way, sorry, apologies.
Maybe, or maybe just like move it back, like to the, back into the right, yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Paul.
Thanks. Um, you know, headers above windows that were not there, that should be there, so this actually should have a structural member. Um, the supports for the roof were not tied down, um, meaning they were either just toenailed in or they didn't have any sort of mechanical tie, there were no cross ties in these rafters. Um, there were, you know, things, things that are red flags for us as architects, um, you know, buried trash, they literally took cans of trash and buried it into the foundation. That doesn't affect the foundation, it just is a red flag to, to tell us what type of contractor we've been, had done this, this work in the past. Um, and, uh, you know, we did have some foundation problems, we had some water damage, um, the more that we peeled away, um, you know, this, this whole corner was rotted out.
A while over that.
Um, you know, so we had to, we had to replace this plate, the more that we peeled away, the more that we found, you know, it was just not structurally sound. Not all of the house, but a large portion of it. The long and the short of it is, we had to go through more removals than we anticipated, um, and essentially we took, um, most of the roof off from this area back, so this is all existing, and we removed a large portion of the existing shingles, uh, which we intend to replace in kind. Um, you know, Paul's office doing their due diligence, they came out, they did inspections on all of our footings. By the way, we did have footing issues on some of the porches at the front and the back, the spans were way too long, um, you know, we had deflection in the floor joists, so we added some additional footings. Um, the footing at the front of the house, and this house is unique in the sense that the front of the house actually faces the neighbor. The side of the house is facing the road, and the code has, um, you know, very specific language about how much you can address or affect the facade facing the road versus what's, you know, facing a side. So, in the process of doing this removal, this is the existing site plan before we started, um, this is actually the front, this is the neighbor, and then, of course, this is Prescott Avenue. So, majority of the work that we're doing is here. E, can you go to our plan? Uh, get back up. So this was the approved, um, removals plan, most of this, as you can see, is interior, so we didn't accept for making some repairs to the existing cedar shakes. Uh, we didn't intend on making more adjustment than the code will allow, but as I said before, when we began to remove things, we found roofs built on top of other roofs, so the original house had a cedar shake roof, and somebody had done partial demo and then built another roof on top of that. Um, the walls were two-by-four walls, um, and a two-by-four wall does not support, you can see this is a roof on top of a roof, um, none of this is collar tied, um, and so, you know, as a result, this is a roof on top of a roof. Again, no headers, no collar ties, it, it just was not done well, to say the least. Um, can you go to the next slide, Enrique, to show, or, or show the slide of the improvements that we made, which I think is one more? So, we have another board that is not part of your package that actually shows what, the new framing that we put up. Um, again, Paul doing his due diligence, he came out, this is more than what the code will allow, I said we have a life safety issue, I'm obligated, you know, under my license by law to make this site safe, he said, do what you need to do to make the site safe, but we still need to come before planning, um, because, uh, the amount that you're affecting the facade is greater than what the code will allow. So, as you can see, the way that we rectified this was new framing, um, all of these collar ties, um, we're replacing all of what we removed, and we're replacing that in kind, this is being built to the approved plans, um, the materials that we're using are matching the existing stone at the foundation, uh, this is the cedar shake roof, so we're not only improving all of this, which again was a life safety issue, but we're making a very, very conscious, very thoughtful gesture to the hilltop specifically, because, you know, I've been around Bronxville enough to know that there's a, you know, that, that there's Bronxville and then there's the hilltop, it's, you know, it's like another level of special. Um, you know, we're, we're drawing specifically off of houses on Valley, other houses on Prescott, um, other houses on Park Avenue, uh, that were designed by William Bates, um, to introduce more stone along the bottom, uh, the lower part of the facade, um, this triple gable, which is very much a, a William Bates, um, signature, these big windows which, you know, you can look at Seven Valley or, um, there's several other, uh, there's one on 24 Park Avenue, I believe, um, Mayor Marvin's old house on Park Avenue, they all have that triple gable with the big windows, so, um, we're, we're addressing, as the clients asked us to do, um, the hilltop aesthetic specifically, um, and the neighbors, gesturing to the neighbors, changing the proportion of the house so that it fits in better with the proportion of the neighbors' houses, and most importantly, repairing, replacing, um, work that is structurally unstable and insufficient. In addition to that, we're bringing it up to energy code. All of the original joists were two-by-eights, we're bringing them up to two-by-ten so that we can spray foam into the, between the rafters to get the R value that we need. We're also replacing key fenestration, all of these are, um, new windows that are thermally broken, the windows, um, that are existing, um, are all, with the exception of a couple, thermally broken, and, um, if they needed repair, then we're repairing those. Um, the, and, and then again, like I said, these, um, rafters and, um, the framing, they were all at 24 inches on center, which, if you know anything about construction, that's about, um, you know, eight inches too wide, so we put them back at 16 on center, which is an even more conservative thing to do, and replaced the two-by-fours with two-by-sixes. So again, we can get, we get the extra structure, but then we also get the, um, the ability to fill that cavity with, um, greater, better insulation with a higher R value. One more thing that I'd like to add is, we do have a, an existing retaining wall that is made by railroad ties, or made with railroad ties, uh, along the north perimeter of the property, um, that is completely blown out, um, I don't know how long it's been there, um, we're replacing that with a core-filled CMU wall that has a stone veneer, um, on the side that is exposed to the air, part of the side that is not exposed to the air, you know, will be treated, and then we've got a footing, uh, that's a continuous footing, uh, you know, with number four rebar at, you know, like six-inch centers that is below the frost line. So, we're, we're greatly improving the site as a whole, not only for our clients, but for the neighbors and the village as a whole.
Okay.
Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Can, could you go to one of the slides that shows the footprint of the house before and after the renovation, and I think just related to this, you alluded to the fact that the front entrance was technically on, I guess that's the south side of the house.
Correct.
But it's being moved to the Prescott side, is that, and the, the legacy entrance is being replaced with a bay window, is that?
Um, technically, the, so, um, Mr. Chairman, this is the front entrance, there is a side entrance here, um, Mr. Taft and I had very long conversations about this. Um, we are not moving the front entrance, however, the, we, we, we had a conversation using some common sense that may be, um, a little less, um, strict to the code, not that we're asking any change to the code. The reality is that this will still be the side, and this will still be a side entrance, but by aesthetically addressing it, um, it gives it a better presence and quote-unquote curb appeal that is a better experience not only for the clients, but also for all the neighbors around. It will still be a side entrance. In plan, we've got a mudroom here, um, the kitchen is in this area as well, um, which they're in the, roughly the same area now, where we've, we've adjusted them, we haven't moved them out of this area. Family room will be in this area. This is the entrance that people come to, um, when they're guests, or when they've come to the house for the first time, it is, it is, it will always be the front entrance, there's a vestibule here, the dining room, and the living room there. It's just, it's not, when you're driving down that street, you don't go, oh, that's the obvious front entrance.
Yeah, I mean, you literally don't see it until after you're past the house, if you're coming in off of Avon.
Right.
You're, you're, and then you kind of look back to your left.
Right.
And, and then you see this door, which it looks like you've got it kind of, uh, kind of marked off, you know, for the time being, um, it, it just looked, I, it wasn't clear to me what, you know, what was in store for that entrance, and, so I guess, if someone is, as you say, visiting the house for the first time, will there, will it be landscaped so that it'll be clear that that's where they're expected to enter, or will it be more, uh, you know, more of an ornamental and decorative nature and not used as a practical matter as, you know, where everyone is constantly coming in and out?
So, so I think both, right? Um, I think that, um, originally this house had a circular drive, it has two curb cuts now, that was removed so that they could provide some additional drainage. So now you have, Enrique, can you go back to our, um, site plan, please? So, we're keeping both of these driveways, we're treating them, um, you know, we're reworking them in a way that, you know, they're aesthetically more pleasing, and we're connecting these two driveways through, uh, by a walkway. So, I think, you know, if you're a little kid trick-or-treating, you're gonna come to this door, right? If, you know, you're a guest, um, you know, coming for dinner or a cocktail, you'll, you're still gonna come to this door. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, to address this kind of, Enrique, can you go back to our elevation, please? To address the, um, the idea that, actually, that's fine, if you wanna go to that one, um, to dress this up a little bit more so that it's more obvious that it's, it's a more formal entrance, we've, um, taken the awning and actually glazed it so that it, um, A, creates more presence, and B, it gives you a place, it's an unconditioned space on the existing stoop, and it gives you a place to step in out of the rain, you know, drop your umbrella, drop your, um, you know, coat if you wish, um, but also, it, and it's a very traditional detail that you find in a lot of New England homes, um, but as I said, it gives this entrance more presence.
So, okay, so that's still a door, because when I first looked at it, it looked like a bay window, actually, but it's, it's a door with side lights.
Correct. Enrique, can you go to the previous slide?
And a glazed awning.
So, this is the street elevation, and this is the, um, the vestibule.
Yes. Yes.
And then there's another vestibule. And if you go to plan. So, the, the drive will be here and then this is a glazed portico, just to get you out of the wind and rain before you go into the entry foyer, and then the living room and dining room there. So, this whole part of the house, this whole partie, none of this has changed. And like I said, the, the, if you did a bubble diagram, this is very similar to what's there now. We've just reorganized it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking about it for a few reasons, but one is the fact that, to the extent that the south-facing entrance is regularly used as the primary entrance, that that could have, as I understand it, has in the past, under previous ownership, an impact on the neighbors. The houses are fairly close together up there and if people are constantly coming and going, you know, that might be, you know, it could affect the, the neighbors to the south, you know, further down Prescott. The second issue, which you alluded to, is the impact that how these entrances or sides are classified has a consequence under the zoning code.
Yes.
And, which of course affects setbacks and other regulations of, you know, what approvals might be necessary. But, Mr. Taft will speak to that in, in due course as well. I'm sorry, I'm speaking too much. Board, questions, comments?
Hey, Anderson, could you just go to, could you just take us through a little bit of the, it looks like you're adding four, five hundred square feet in total. Am I right about that?
Four hundred and sixty-nine.
Right. That was, so you've answered the question of why it costs so much, because you've, you've, I feel, I'm sorry you guys had to deal with this. And I'm so happy you found Anderson to put it back right and you're willing to do that. That's wonderful. It must be an awful experience to have him call you and say, I have some bad and bad news. But can you just go through for us the additional space and where is it? I, it's on a couple of these charts. I just, here, for me, it was easier for me than looking at the diagrams.
Sure. So, there's some additional space in the garage, because we bumped that out and made that a little bit wider. By the way, the footprint has changed by, between one and two percent. It's gotten a little bigger by that much, but we're still way under our permeable and we have actually improved the open space. The majority of the square footage is upstairs. If you go to the second floor. So, currently, you know, this is the upstairs footprint. And we've added another office room back here.
Is that if you go to a couple to the right where you get the, the house, the outside view? Could you, sir, could you go to the, the ones where you showed the existing and the new, the side view? Yeah, is that where you see on the bottom right? Is that what you're talking about, Anderson?
If you go, Enrique, go back one more. Right, so?
Yeah, okay.
This, you know, we bumped this out.
This is where you bumped out, yes.
Right? And then we've, you know, bumped this out and we've made this actually a little bit wider. So, the, the intent, the original intent was, all of this stays the same. And, you know, if you've done, you know, renovation, adding a dormer to this existing roof is, you know, it's not, it's not that big of a deal typically. I mean, we don't have to take, you know, a whole lot of, we can build this and build this and then tie into the existing. And that's why we got into, you know, the issue with removing more than we intended. So, Mr. Nest, to answer your question, yes, this is the majority of the square footage that's being added. And there's a little bit down here and a little bit in the back.
Thank you. And the, that fireplace that's in over the center gable, is that, is that going to be a working fireplace? Is that the furnace? What is that?
It is. It's a working fireplace. This is existing. This chimney goes down to the first floor and we've got, you know, a footing below that. There's only, the masonry is, is, is just at the roof. We, you know, we have it framed and she rocked with a metal flue.
With a what?
A metal flue. And that's a gas fireplace, sorry.
I see, yeah.
Sorry.
Hmm.
That's an important detail.
Yeah. Any other comments? Questions?
I don't think I'm ever going to get that picture of the interior roof out of my mind.
I know, right? Well, you know, it's interesting, because, you know, I'm, I'm surprised that the house was built in nineteen fifty-three. The, the, the house was originally, you're saying it was originally built in nineteen fifty-three?
Correct. So, the, the people that built it, and I'm blanking on their last name, which is interesting because we're doing another renovation over on Oriole. And apparently they were antique dealers or something like that. And the people that, that we, our clients over on Oriole actually had some paperwork where they bought some antiques from the people, you know, back in the sixties or whatever that originally built this house. So, it's a, it's a roundabout way of saying that they were, they were very historically minded, to the point that they actually in the fifties came to the board to ask for a variance to lower the ceilings so that it felt more like an eighteenth-century structure. And that's, you know, this is, it's a, it's interesting because it's a salt box kind of, you know, neo-colonial, you know, that's, it's, that's very much, you know, a New England type structure, but not necessarily reminiscent of, you know, so much of what makes up the hilltop, which is interesting.
Yes. Also, you know, you're a historical architect among other things. It's generally inappropriate to create a false historical impression or to damage character-defining features. I actually feel better about some of the features you've introduced based on the fact that it was built in nineteen fifty-three and not nineteen thirteen.
Right. Agreed.
So, it's, you know, ironically, as you could probably appreciate, it's, it gives you a little more flexibility, I think, in terms of what you're, you're doing with it. Mr. Taft, would you like to speak to this application and?
Yes, I might explain why this is here. Originally, it was approved under the assumption that forty-eight percent of the front would be altered, but no, no more than that. And with our new code three-ten-twenty-six-D regarding material alterations, that complied at the time. And, in looking at that code, what we want to avoid is sort of what happened here. It was unavoidable if they didn't know, but on, on future applications, I am warning applicants that, you know, if you do find that it's in conditions similar to this, that they would be referred to your board under that section of code for material alteration. So that, you know, it's best that they do a little due diligence ahead of time to make sure that, that they're not going to take it down. And, and part of, part of that section, it really is to avoid an applicant from, you know, saying, well, gee, we've got to tear the whole thing down, as opposed to, you know, having it managed and it's not a big change. I, you know, I felt very badly that they were, you know, in the midst of this construction as well as they had this big surprise and I'm sure the expense ballooned. But, you know, there was a dramatic removal here and they were very, very cooperative when I, when I met with them. You know, it was just to make it safe right now, hold off and go before the board. So, it is a little difficult in that what they still propose is to keep under that forty-eight percent threshold, but the problem is that we're such an extensive removal. So, you know, in, in looking at it, they are going to keep within the limits and, you know, but, but on the same token, they're here and, you know, your input on it, I'm sure would be appreciated and, you know, that's, so that's the story about how we got here. All right?
Sorry, one more, one more question, which we touched on earlier. So, what is, what is the analysis of, you know, what, what's the front? What's the side? And, you know, and there's a procedural consequence too, because then we have to figure out, do we need to refer this to zoning? You know, what is, so what is your analysis of this, which we should be guided by?
Well, I think you have a, a page on there with your calculations, right?
We do.
Can you bring that up?
Yep.
But, so in terms of the setbacks, for example?
The setbacks, or maybe even bring up the setback, the, the drawing with the setbacks? I mean, I believe, what is, what is this, what are you showing? Is it a setback? You know, I, I, in this one, looking at it right now, I don't remember what we discussed. I would say that the front is where, you know, off of Prescott, that, you know, parallel to Prescott would be the front. You know, so I believe with our calculations that, that's what we assumed. Is, is the front for the three-ten-twenty-six-D, you know, it's that part that changed, is that less than fifty percent? You know, I, I know there is something about the front door. I believe that's more in, like, if it's a corner lot, then the front door would be the principal front and then the secondary front would be the other one. So, that, that's how I would interpret that.
I mean, I, I don't know, so does this, it would be pre-existing non-conforming if it didn't, didn't comply with the zoning, but I'm just trying to figure out whether, is it, is it pre-existing non-conforming?
Yeah, there are parts of it that are pre-existing non-conforming.
Right. So, so then the question is, because it's being renovated, is there any, anything about the nature of this work that would necessitate that it go to zoning?
No.
Because it's pre-existing non-conforming?
Right. No, it's not, it's not any more non-conforming.
Right.
It's, 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 you know, no greater and it's non-conformity. So, it doesn't require going before zoning.
Yes. And, and does that include the retaining wall also?
Yeah, providing it's less than six feet, you know, at any point, which we've discussed and, and that's what's being proposed, is it would be less than six feet.
Okay.
The, the question was, in the front yard, half-open, but I think we use that non-conforming, I think it's three-ten-twenty-five. You know, yes, it's not the same material, but that wall is there. It's non-conforming from, from the, the most front part of the house to the street, that's the front yard. And that retaining wall is solid now, so putting a retaining wall there, it's solid. It's different material, but the, the non-conformity is the half-open or half, the half-open part. So, it's, it's, again, the non-conformity is not being increased.
Yes. And, and since we have you and you know this has been an issue on all of our residential applications as well as some others, could you address the stormwater management on the property?
Sure, sure. So, we have the original, okay, and actually I should have mentioned, so we have the original permit which was approved. They also have an amendment which is in the application. The original approval included stormwater management. That was approved by our consulting engineer, A.J. from PCI. And, and that was in, the, the provisions they made for that stormwater was in excess of what was required. So, they put in additional drainage. And then, if you can go to where the amended site. And then they added some drainage as well as, the amendment is for the retaining wall and retaining wall and some landscaping down further and towards backyard.
Oh, okay.
And, and it's, it's either gravel or, I guess what?
It's permeable surface.
And so really, it, you know, I, we worked with the consulting engineer and, and I think Hudson Engineering, where the, the walkways would, would really become a store for stormwater. So, you know, it's a, it's a certain amount of gravel where if there is, and it goes on to there, it's, it's slowing it down and whatnot. So, you know, we've, in the village, we've been working very hard. Everybody knows we've had, you know, serious flooding. And we've, we've worked with applicants to assess what their existing conditions are. If there are sump pumps that feed into the sewer, that needs to come out. Are there gutters working as, you know, were originally installed? Sort of assessing that first and then if there are deficiencies there with the new work, let's kind of clean that up and add additional to help with that.
Yes.
You know, so the stormwater's been a very serious situation and we're trying our best to, you know, help each other as, as neighbors and it's worked really well. People have been very responsive to that, just like this situation. It's like, listen, you know, you might only be required to have four cul-de-sacs. If you put in six or eight, you know, you're helping your neighbor downhill, they're, they've got a hill there, as well as if, if down the road they wanted to add a, you know, a small amount of square footage of impervious area, then you have that capacity to add it into a system.
Yes.
So, that's what we've been working on.
And are you aware of any particular issues with respect to this property historically or?
I'm not, it's, you know, it is, it is quite a hill going down towards the back. I believe there were a couple of pipes that just, you know, daylighted and, and, you know, we looked at that onsite in our study of this and they're going to take care of that. And, you know, they've been very responsive to help the neighbors, which has, has been great.
Yes. And finally, it doesn't sound like there was any excavation done in connection with this, you know, like digging additional basement space or anything of that nature. It sounds like most of the work was done, you know, above the existing foundation.
Correct. What's, I'm sorry, I'll let you. You're good?
Yes. It's, yeah. Sorry, thank you, Paul.
Interestingly enough, except for some of the areas underneath the porches, the original foundation was actually done quite well. So, we didn't excavate. We had that evaluated by Marquette Engineering and it's, you know, solid, very solid. And then just to build on, on what Paul is saying, you know, this is, this was the drainage that was put in, in the front yard, probably in two thousand and fourteen, which is very good. However, in the, in an effort to not burden the infrastructure of the village and also be, you know, great neighbors and mitigate any sort of, you know, problems later, this, these six cul-de-sac take all of the house plus twenty percent. And then we added another two for anything else that might be associated with the landscaping. And this is primarily softscape. You know, it's new street, new trees, shrubs, things like that.
Yes. So, like the hundred-year events that we get every five years?
It's, right. And it's, it, I mean, they, they, the engineers designed it conservatively for the hundred year, but off the record, he was like, this thing's, it'll take a bigger storm than that. storm than that.
Yeah, great. Okay. Thank you very much. Board, any other questions, comments, concerns?
So, given that, that all this was approved until they ran into, the issues that they ran into, what is our job tonight?
So, we're, and Paul will correct me if I'm wrong, but we are in accordance with 310-26 granting or considering with a view to granting a site plan approval. Is that correct, Paul? So, so the building department issued a building permit.
Right, but, right.
And we, and in light of the developments that were discovered once the work commenced, had, had the scope of that work been fully understood at the time the application was submitted, it would have been submitted to us for a site plan approval at that time. So, it's kind of, you know, we are where we are, but I think, I think we'd all agree that Mr. Kenny and, and the owners did the responsible thing.
Right.
And Mr. Taft bringing it to us because, you know, this, this is why we have the, the code provision, to consider major renovations, which, you know, for better or worse, this turned out to be. So, so that's, does that, does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, we're not going backwards. We're not going, critiquing their plans or anything at this point. We're just kind of over-stamping, right, and understanding what, how they got here.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, I, you, you're up there, so you, you know, are familiar with the property.
Yeah.
I don't think at this, you know, they're, they're kind of, they are where they are in terms of the work they've done.
That's like, that's my point.
And there's been a pause. But I don't think anything that the, the DRC heard or that we've heard tonight would necessitate them going back and redoing any of the, any of the existing work. At least I, I haven't heard anything, but if anyone on the board, you know, I, I don't have any concerns based on the existing plans of what they've done so far. Having said that, and this is not, to me, this is not that application, but in future, if we find ourselves in a similar situation and there is something of fundamental concern, it is certainly within this board's, you know, not, not only right, but responsibility to make sure those, whether there are deficiencies or changes that need to be made, to make sure they're addressed. So, but I, I don't believe this is one of those cases. So, if there are no more questions or comments from the board, why don't we open the public hearing? And I will open up the public hearing, but I, unless the owners would like to say something, which probably not, I'm not seeing any comments from the public, we'll close the public hearing.
And was there a requirement that the neighbors be notified of the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they were.
And that's been.
That was part of this application.
Okay.
There was a bunch of stuff in there.
Yeah, in there.
I just got so tired of looking at the restaurants, mailings.
They have the same mail.
Okay. And so the neighbors aren't turning out and for us objecting, so?
No, so actually we've notified them by mail as we're required to do, at, at least three times, because this has gone through a couple of different permits. But I also personally went to the neighbors, knocked on their door, introduced myself, let them know what we were doing and that, you know, and gave them my number. If you've got a problem, if there's an issue, feel free to call me, you know, I'll, I'll do my best.
At this point, they probably want it done.
That's right.
So, we're, but...
I commend you for doing the right thing, really. And I'm sorry again, we all are, for the unfortunate circumstances you did, but that's, thank you.
So, discussion?
I don't have any questions. I think they've done the right thing. They came forward. It looks like the work that they're doing is going to make it structurally better and it looks like it's going to fit into the neighborhood.
Is it sixty weeks from now? Your application says sixty weeks. Oh, that we're going to finish?
Yeah. So, you're obviously in, deep in the...
Oh, is that from the original?
It was in, it was in the...
It was.
Oh, that was the original. Yeah, yeah, sorry. And I had to do my math. Sorry, don't have a heart attack.
Anderson, they're watching you.
Right. Yeah.
So, how, how, how long do you have?
We're trying to get in, you know, by, by November, so that they can have Thanksgiving there. That's the objective.
Well, unless there are...
And we've been very lucky with weather and we have a crack team that's doing the building, who are, know the objective and that are doing everything they can to back into it despite the stop order.
Yes. Well, unless there are any other questions or comments, would someone like to make a motion to approve this application?
I have some move.
Motion made. Any seconds?
Second.
Ms. Myers? It's the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yeah, I think we have to do the merits first. No, they're not here. They don't always come.
Oh, they don't always come?
No. This is right. I can just over-stamp.
Okay. Back to the agenda. All right, the next, the next item or group of items, and, you know, we can, we can vote on them individually, but we can talk about them collectively. Seven, eight, nine, and ten all relate to Merit Auto Body, which, you know, if you're familiar, we've all maybe been down there from time to time to avail ourselves of their services. They've got, on Milburn Street, they've got the, you know, the garage and the office entrance on one side of the street and they have another one on the other side next to Bronxville Auto. So, so what they're proposing to do is put new awnings and signage on both sides of the street. So, the design review committee has reviewed and recommended approval of both sets of signage and both sets of awnings. There was one change they requested to the signage. There was a shadow that was in the sign that they requested be removed and you will have seen the revised signage circulated. So, unless there are any questions or comments or concerns, do I have a motion to approve the awning application for Merit Auto Body for 26 Milburn Street?
I motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the sign application for, also for 26 Milburn Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is the awning application for 25 Milburn Street across the street. That's the awning. Motion?
Motion to approve.
We get to make lots of motions tonight.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the final one is the sign for 25 Milburn Street. Eileen, want to do it again?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero again. And that concludes, oh, and by the way, for what it's worth, the, the applicant also provided the sample requested by the design review committee of their black awning, which...
But now there's holes in the awnings where they got the samples, right?
So, okay, so I think that brings us to the end.
Can I have a question? The postponed one for Iona University, can I ask a question about, they came before.
Yes.
Can I bring it up in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question. I drive by there a lot. When they came here, we made a very nice compromise that they were going to build this nicer centerpiece, Iona University, I think it is now, and take down the inside of the coffins.
Yes.
And so when is that going to happen? They're still there?
They're still there.
Okay, just wanted to make that note, that...
I, I drive past it all the time as well and I, and they haven't...
Construction's going on, so...
Yeah.
And I know that they're coming with more signage.
Yes.
That's what that is.
Yeah.
It's probably they delayed it. They want to get the...
Just, just, just a...
The metal. Well, right.
We did have an agreement.
It was very, yeah, it was very clear and I think they're, it looks like they've got that staging set up for where they're going to do the main grading work up to the entrance of Feth Hall. I, you know, if they come before us in April, we can certainly ask them what the timing is on, on removing those letters. So, next meeting is down for April 12th, 2023. And unless there are any other comments or questions, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned. See you all in April. Thank you.